We was able to have one more softball tournament before the season for, before reg season ended. We had 11 teams this time. We had six 8U and five 10U teams. In June, June the 18th, we're hosting the district tournament for 7U and 8U baseball. And then Stacy said we had 38 electrical expenses for the month of May. That's all I have.
Mr. Goff? I'd report on our SLOSS, and of course, Don will report later as well, but SLOSS came in this, this month, which again is two months ago spending in Dade County for $298,314. We go through a workshop like we just did, and so many people come in to ask for that money for vehicles, for the library, for safety gear for our fire department rescue. We're so blessed to have that coming in to be able to do those things. So we thank you. If you're listening, anybody that spends their, their money in Dade County, we sure thank you for it. Other than that, all I want to say, and Don kind of hit on a few minutes ago, the assessment notices have gone out. It's not our bills. We won't get them till later on in the year. But there is a 45-day window from the time you receive that, that they go out and you receive them. If you're out there and you're, you don't wait till that 45 days is up, if you want to appeal your taxes or what's on that, that assessment, then you need to do it before that 45 days because it's inevitable that about every year, someone will come in here to us right before when they get the real thing, the real bill in the mail, and they'll want to do something. And that's why the state legislature a few years ago, several years ago now, made them start sending these things out. Before you get your tax bill, you get what your tax bill may be, but it gives you that opportunity to appeal what's on that piece of paper if you have reason to. So please do that. I don't want to overload them in there, but that's what they're there for, and that's what the law, the legislature was set up for. Thank you very much.
Ms. Bradford?
Yeah, I was going to speak about the same thing. Definitely get out there and do that. I wanted to talk about that the septic tank grant is still out there, so if you're having any problems or need repairs, please contact them. They're doing, they were doing just up to 40%, but now it's 40%, which is pretty amazing. I took advantage of it. It was very helpful. Let me get my glasses on. We had 412 work orders for the road department, 863 tons, which comes out to $27,586. And then I wanted to just kind of, I've been trying to reach out to some of the other departments that, that I kind of oversee or, or watch over, and everybody seems to be running clearly. So I'm, you know, I asked them, you know, is there anything that they need to report on or highlight? And everything seems to be going okay. The health department mentioned that they were very caught up in COVID for so long that they do want to let the people know that they're back in service, that they, you know, all those services that they used before, they still are using them. They've been a little slow. I also wanted to kind of touch with, you know, the, the web pages that we have for the health department. I think they're going to put some up for us and just show you how to maneuver some of those. You could go on and see the different ratings from the restaurants in town, which I thought was pretty interesting. I think he's going through that. That'll show some of the different restaurants and their ratings, which I was not aware of that that was out there for you. So those are some good information. And that's about all that I have.
Yeah, yeah. We get a report every month, you know, on the restaurants, you know, at our, our helpful meeting will be next Wednesday, and it's, you know, and if you go on the website and pick it up.
Yeah, you could go on the-
That's good. I've never even thought about it. Tell them, because people can go on. Used to, they posted in the paper, you know, the, they can in the paper, and they quit doing that for some reason. So it's pretty interesting to see.
Yeah, well, those are some of the things that I'm, I'm kind of getting my feet under me and learning where to look and ask those questions. So I just, I didn't know about it, so I thought it would be good for the public to kind of see that.
Yep, that's true. Okay. I've had a pretty busy month, and it's been a busy, busy few months here as Don and Becca can tell you, as far as budget goes, and as he's mentioned tonight, it's kind of coming to head. We are going to be on schedule now with our hearings and all that, public hearings. So that's, that's one big thing's been going on. We've got, Robert mentioned, and I've had, since the, the tax appraisals have went out, I've got a lot of calls from people. People come in talking to me about it. A lot of property increased in value. I know mine did. I mean, increased last year and increased this year, and this will probably be the first year that I've ever appealed anything on, in my taxes. But it's, you know, June the 27th is the deadline. After, if you come in on June 28th, she's, she can't do anything for you. She won't, you know? So if you, if you look at it and you don't agree with it, that's what we pay them for. That's what, that's what that office is for, you know? And, you know, you know, go in and talk to them and say, I mean, it may have been, it may be a mistake, or, you know, whatever, but, you know, at least ask them why, you know, if it went up tremendously, what changed, you know? And that way you'll, you'll know that. And like Robert said, that's not a tax bill. It's, it's to let you know what it might be, you know, is look at that bottom number down there. So stress to you to try to do that. We've got issues still, and I brought this up from, from almost two months ago, we're going with the railroad. I mean, we've been, man, if you, if you live in Trenton, you know what I'm talking about. And if you live up on Steel Road, you know what I'm talking about. We, we were going to mess around up there, and we're going to have vitality. I just, it's just scary. They're blocking the tracks, and I finally got Connor Poe with, he's our state person of the railroad. He finally, they're supposed to be moving this as we speak down there. This, this car is here tonight. They've been on there since Sunday, and they're, they're saying, well, you know, you've got another way around. Well, that's not good. I mean, if you're going to block any crossing, especially for seven, five, six, seven days, they need to break these trains. There's no reason why it can't. And we've got the roads north of here that I'm talking about, they're one way in, one way out. Steel Road, there's nowhere to land a helicopter over there in case we had a, a bad issue happen over there. And so I just want people to know, we're doing everything, the commission and myself, we're doing everything we can. Alex has been on board with it. And, you know, we've got the federal government involved in it. Hopefully, you know, we can have some type of a, you know, I don't know, I guess an agreement or whatever before this month's out, because we're, especially on our, our dead end roads up here. But the trains are longer, they're taking longer to break it down in Chattanooga. They've got all kinds of excuses, but we, we, we got to do something before something bad happens. The, I want to give a, a report also on their tornado shelters. They really, we're back on those things going now. I mean, we had, had some ports, there's some boxes, big boxes ordered that were not coming in. Alex finally got, got two from the phone company now. Their underground boxes go with electrical. That's for the one down at Full Fields. Where the one at Rising Pond or in South Dade, they'll be doing a septic system next week, septic tank fill line, the, and also the water line to it. Davis, they've got the footers dug up there. They've got, actually, they're going to be pouring them Saturday. I got a report there just a minute ago on that. So they'll be pouring concrete up there Saturday. They've got the, the water tapped and run up there on it, so it's going very well. The first one probably to open, and it's because it's actually going to be a, they've already submitted paperwork for it to be a voting precinct, will be the one at South Dade. We're trying to concentrate on it and get that before November. Of course, we should be, should be a reason why it shouldn't be open before November, but it'll be one of the first ones we open. And then, in fact, it may be, we might open them simultaneously with this one down here. But right now, we're trying to, trying to spend some time down there and get that one finished, and then come back up here to this one, at Full Fields. We've had some questions. I have, in the past month or so, had several this week, people that are concerned, I don't know whether there's, some article came out in Georgia in some of the papers, but about the bridges across Georgia being unsafe or whatever. I mentioned this on the radio a few weeks ago, but we have kept our bridges open in Dade County. We're really fortunate, especially compared to some of our northwest Georgia counties, North Georgia counties. And as issues come up, they inspect these bridges every year. Dade, meaning the state, they come in, and then they give us a printout of what must be done to these bridges. And we've kept those up ever since I've been in here. We, we, when it, when we get that sheet, whatever it is, we go and we fix it right then. I know some of the counties, Tatuca County, they've got several bridges, main bridges, that's just over main, I mean, the screw bus travels over. They've got to either close the road or fix, they got, but they don't have any money to do it, you know? So that's another thing. But, but I just want to assure people that we've got, our, our bridges are really, you know, when you cross them in Dade County, you can feel safe, you know, going across these bridges. Y'all got anything else you want to bring up?
I just want to say one thing. When you're talking about the, giving a report on these storm shelters, I just like to thank, we got city employees that, they have other jobs, and Ansel, Jerry Kaiser, people that are going down and working on these things. We also have our own county employees, especially the road department, that I put up against any employees anywhere or any, any construction people. So, you know, we owe a lot of thanks to those guys because they're doing a lot of that work that would be-
Mostly. That's why it's taken so long.
If you had somebody, you know, you bring somebody in with a track hoe or some of this machinery and do all that, it would cost thousands and thousands of more dollars. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank the city, and thank the county employees that are doing their jobs and then going and helping to do this. And of course, that is one reason it seems like it's behind, is, is a lack of, of workers on it. But they're doing a great job.
Not to throw into contractors, I mean, I thought of that when we were, but, you know, we're licensed, we're licensed to do the septic and everything. So, you know, we just, that's our tax money, your money, my money. So we just try to do that to save money, and, and when we can do it. And if it's something we can't do or not qualified to do, of course, we don't. But most of this stuff right here, we're handling it, you know? And, and it's saving a tremendous amount of money. Okay. Don, you got anything else? All right. All right, let's move down to appearances. Ms. Mindy Ayworth. She's the manager of our, our Dade County Public Library. She's the boss.
I'm the boss. Thanks, y'all, for having me again. I've got some slides here with some statistics this month. I like it when I hear the reports where I hear numbers, so I thought I'm going to put some numbers out there for y'all this month. Okay. Well, first I want to mention that the, the play card that I told y'all was going to roll out on May 24th. It did. It's been really successful in the library so far. I've had several, many families come to register for summer reading and were able to pull up their, their children's library card, Georgia play card, to register for summer reading. And it's so easy. I've had first graders and second graders come in and remember their school number, and that's all we have to do. We just plug in DCS and their school number, and they have a library card. And every time I pull one up, I get so excited. And I'm like, it's the play card at work. And some of the parents have been thrilled also with that. When they come in, they're like, oh, yeah, I remember hearing about it at school, but I wasn't sure what it meant. I was like, well, what it means is you get five points and no late fines. So they're real happy about that. It's not working?
It's struggling.
Oh, man. Carrie even came into the library today and assured me my slides were going to show up.
Well, they're working on our CMD here.
Okay, y'all, y'all can see what we've got. All right. And I, oh, there we go. And Bill Bankson from the Dade County Schools, he was instrumental. There was a lot of back and forth with our state rep and Bill to get the play card up and running, where we had to, they had to share information, and he was just instrumental in getting that rolled out before the summer reading program. All right. Our summer reading challenge, as of yesterday, when I made my slides, we had 140 people already registered for summer reading. And those are folks that have taken the time to go into the, the website, get themselves registered, and there's all sorts of things that they can earn throughout the library as incentives for reading and logging their minutes for themselves and for their children. I listed a few of the things that, that you can win on there. We've got some great prizes for, I keep encouraging adults to enter. I've got some great adult books on there. We've got a Dolly Parton bundle, if anybody's interested. So anyway, I encourage anyone to log on to the summer reading challenge, chrl.beenstack.org, and sign up for summer reading. Our collection development for May, in May, just the month of May, we added 75 children's titles and 60 adult titles. So those display units that Lisa was talking about during the SLOSS, that's to house some of these books. Everyone that comes into the library, they make a beeline for our new titles. They want to see what's new. And so that's really been important as I've moved into this role, is making sure that we are ordering books every month. So this is what we added this month, and we have seen a lot of them circulate, and folks are really excited about seeing those new books. The other thing we added this month, oh, sorry, go back, was that Snapmaker 3D printer. It's also got a CNC carver on it and a laser engraver. We talked with the high school about what product to buy, and they were really instrumental in helping us select this for the library, so we can work in collaboration with some of our high school students. And we're putting together a process for folks to send us their designs that we can then print out at the library. I think there's a video up on our Facebook page as well. Spencer, our youth education coordinator, did a live action shot of the, of the 3D printer printing something out. So we encourage you to have a look at that. May programming, we had 16 programs in the month of May. We had four ready to read once a week, four children's programs, again, one program per week, 14 programs, one per week, two adult programs and two family programs. Our total program attendance for the month of May, we had 269 people come to our programs at the library. I'm really excited about that. One of the numbers, I'm, I even showed Spencer, I was like, Spencer, this is all you. I'm so happy. Look at that number for teens, 31 participants in our teen program. That is a demographic we've really been struggling to bring into the library, so we are super happy. We had a teen program going on tonight as we left to come over here, and so really excited about what we're seeing happening. And I'll just throw in, we've also got five teen volunteers right now working that I've been training, and we're really excited about that. They're bringing their own energy to the library. All right, some of our May stats. Our meeting room, we saw nine uses of our meeting room with 26 people in the month of May. Our study rooms, which is, which are our small rooms off to the side, we had nine uses, 12 people. Our door count, and this is how many people walked in the door to use the library in the month of May, 2,311 people. And our public computer use, this is a, this is a stat that I'm not sure we've ever shared, 339 people logged into our public computers to use those computers. We are a hub, and people come to us, they don't have a computer, or their computer broke, they come and they use our computers. I wish I had a fax machine stat on here. I'm still trying to figure out how to do that, because people love our fax machine, too. We, we send faxes all the time. I need to start doing a little tally myself. The printer, 680 copies were made by the public on our printer. It's another thing that we, we just see day in and day out, is sort of the community coming to us and, and using our services. So all of that, I'm happy to say, these numbers speak for themselves, how much use and how much we're seeing the community come and use the library. So thanks again for letting me speak. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Good report. Good report. We appreciate it.
Thank you for those numbers. I was waiting for that good report.
All right. Ms. Sarah Dyer and Laura Beth Cunningham with our 4X UGA extension. Appreciate y'all coming. Thank you. That's pretty quick.
Yeah, I know. Like Mindy's really cut down that time. Yeah. She's, we're going to be longer than her this time.
Yes, we will be. So I was happily a part of recent her teen numbers. I did a big presentation on the tragedy of Pompeii, and so I had 10 of her 31 people come to that program. But we, I think we had about 10 teens, but we also had some adults that were really interested in that. I had quite a few adults come sit in on that one, so that one was pretty interesting. I also taught anthropology lesson that really focused on Jane Goodall and her chimpanzees. Jane Goodall has done a lot for the entire world with her foundation. And I did this whole presentation where I compared us to chimpanzees, and chimpanzees can be like us, and, you know, they smile, they play with toys, they play with instruments, and, and the kids felt that was really fun. And then we sat down and colored some chimpanzee sheets and did a word search, so they liked that, too. Craft night, I'm starting to have a good turnout, and I've already had quite a bit of people RSVP for this next one. But we kind of did Father's Day type themed stuff, and the kids made a confetti tree with birds and then made cards. One of the popular cards was a tie that they could color, and then we put a string around it so their dads could wear that. Just really great paper tie. This next month, which I think is the 17th, we are going to make birdhouses out of like half and half cartons. So I'm getting a lot of interest in that, because people are wanting their birds to have these houses. In May, I did have my first homeschoolers meeting, and I had a very good turnout, which was more than I was expecting. But we, each, each little kid planted a tomato plant, and we kind of did half and half. So some of them put it up on top of their refrigerator to keep it warm and see if it fermented better, and the other ones did the window seal. And the refrigerator trick does work if you're wanting your seeds to grow a little bit quicker. I think it was about four days quicker than the window seal.
Wow.
So that was a little experiment we did with that. But all but one kid's tomato plant came up. So they were all really happy about that, and we talked about it at our meeting that was Wednesday. So in this next, this, in our May meeting that I'll talk a little bit more about, I had even more people show up. So I'm, I'm thinking I'm going to have a homeschoolers community club of like 50-plus kids. So I'm amazed at how many homeschool families that we have. So our shotgun team did go to state. Let me just tell you that for the month of May, it was the coldest and windiest day that these poor kids had to go up on a hill and try to shoot. And they really did great. They didn't realize how well they did until the end, because everybody's scores were so low. But they really had a good time once they realized, oh, well, maybe we didn't do so bad, because they were down the whole time. But, but they did really good, and, you know, everybody was happy at the end. So we had our chick-to-chick and pickup. I am terrible at taking pictures, so I did not take any pictures of the kids actually taking them home. But I had lots of parents who had dogs, and they started sending me all these pictures of how their dogs are like loving on the chicks and babysitting them. So I threw up that, just to show that everybody's got their chicks, so. So again, this is our summer schedule. We've got signups going on for all of it. We're having a pretty, pretty good, I think, turnout, yes. So forestry judging is actually going to make a big comeback in Dade County, because I have had a lot of interest in that. And I think I'm going to have a forestry judging team of at least 10. So I'm very happy with that. And then the next slides are just the ones of our flyers, our upcoming camp. The first one we're going to do is a chick-to-chicken. Sarah and I sat down and planned that today. Then I'm going to do, instead of a greenhouse gardening, it's just going to be gardening. We did get a grant for a greenhouse, and we thought we were all set, but that grant money hasn't come through yet. But we're still going to have a gardening class. And then we're going to do some hikes. Our first one's in Stevens Gap. It's in Scottsboro, it's on private property, so you have to have a permit to go in. So that one's going to be a really good one, because you can't just go up there and do that hike. And it's down into a really cool cave. Then we're going to go up to the Kahuna Fishery Center, and they're going to walk us through all of that. I know that they do a lot of catfish. They have like an experimental koi pond up there, so that'll be a good trip for them to go to. And forestry judging, I'm going to have a good turnout. The last thing to register for that is on the 28th. And then we will practice every Tuesday through summer, and then right when they go back to school, it'll be like the second Tuesday we'll go to competition. And then I'm going to take some to the tele-science museum towards the end of July, middle of July. I am collaborating with Carroll County, because you have to have a really big group to get the discounted rate. So I'm good friends with the agent there, so she and I are kind of, it's kind of halfway. We're meeting with our kids up there for that. And then we're going to do a Glen Falls hiking trip, that's up in, on Lookout Mountain. And then we'll do one final chick-to-chicken project camp, where the one that we do first, we're mainly going to talk about breeds, diseases, things like that. And then the last one will really throw in, like how to get your chickens ready for show, like giving them a bath and putting oil on them to make them shiny. So that'll be more what the second one's about.
Yes, so I hope everyone at home was kind of paying attention to those deadlines that are coming up. That's really why this is a longer presentation tonight, is she's got entire, an entire summer planned of awesome trips and activities. But there are deadlines to register for that. So for everyone watching at home, if your kids or grandkids are interested in going on one of these trips or partaking in one of these day camps, definitely get them signed up. We have three deadlines tomorrow. Those are the Chick-to-Chicken Project first day camp, as well as the greenhouse or gardening day camp, and the Stevens Gap hiking trip. So those three registration ends tomorrow. Our livestock show team is in full swing. Practices have begun with that, and the first show that we're going to always is in Coleman, Alabama at the end of June. So we will spend a couple days there to get these kids showing off the projects they've been working really hard on. So right now is the time where they have these baby animals that they have to train how they show. They're also trying to hone in on their skills so that they're ready for that first show. So that is in full swing, and the season has begun. This past month, the Georgia Cattlemen's Association hosted a short course. The Young Cattlemen's Council was the sponsor for that. I presented on direct marketing of beef. This was over in Athens, Georgia, and we had a pretty good turnout for this. It wasn't as out there and advertised as quickly as GCA and YCC would have hoped, so hopefully next time, I'll have that information to you guys sooner, so local cattlemen can make the trip if they'd like to. In May, we kicked off our newest series. You guys heard me sharing about the registration for the Dade Greater Gardener series last time. So that has begun. We have an awesome turnout of that. So this might break records for an adult homeowner program in Dade County of almost 60 registrants enrolled in that 12-month program. So we had to order more tables for that. Thanks to our budget, we were able to get that in at the end of this fiscal year. We had to order eight more tables, so we are nearly at capacity. We've had folks still wanting to come register, and we don't want to turn anybody away, but we are kind of at our limits, and we have realized that there's a lot of interest where we might just have to repeat the series in another year or two. The Tri-State Beekeepers Association will be meeting at our office on June 13th at 7:00. We did just get the information today, that's not up on that screen of the speaker. The speaker will be Ms. Bella Donna, and I think she's going to be talking about the importance of inspection on hives in the spring and early summertime to avoid some troubleshooting problems later. Then we will also have our Tri-State Cattlemen's Association meeting coming up on June 21st, but that meeting this coming month will be over in Walker County. So that program is still being finalized, but mark down that date to join us. Any questions?
Thank you.
Good report. Busy. Is this, where people can go and look at the scheduling? I know you have a website. Have you shared it with Carrie on our website?
Yes, she has. On our Facebook page. I don't think we can at all the website, but we can send all those flyers or deadlines to her.
Be good, yeah, okay.
I feel like I've seen something, because I just looked at all that, but, yeah, I'd check with her, but I feel like I've seen something about it, so.
Yes, I am. Hopefully you guys have. We've been trying to kind of get it out there, but I know everything is hitting at once, so we can get these dates in front of people. But we want them to really make sure they realize there's deadlines coming up now.
Yeah, yeah. I feel like I've seen it, but I would double check with her.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's move down to, well, George Williams is not here tonight, the Alliance. You gonna handle it, okay?
He should.
I didn't thank you a little, George.
I'm, I'm not quite George, but I will do the best that I can.
Good, 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 good.
He gave me the information, and I agreed to come up and do my best. So, if you'll advance a slide. Just good news still. We're still at 105 investors working on outreach, trying to get folks to re-up in the, in the Alliance. Our Lunch and Learn from the Fifth, which was the date they did the last meeting, went very well. Senator Mullis, Representative Cameron. We did host the website for the US 11 Antique Alley. It went very well. Local items are still available for purchase there in the Welcome Center. And it can be purchased or donated. And there's the artwork by local artists, Civil War, the book, Civil War, Dade County, and birdhouses made by students here in Dade County. And then still partnering with Families First and Dade County Schools on the Care Closet, working with the Public Arts Committee on the Plum Nellie Depot Art Show, and getting ready for our September Job Fair. And then new numbers, we continue to see more and more calls and visitors to the Welcome Center. So, more and more folks coming in and interested in Dade County. And that is the extent of what I've got. It's good news in short.
Any questions? Thank you. Good report. Appreciate you being here. Donna Stride, she's not here tonight. Don, I have a report. Don, I'm just talking. Okay. She'd be back next week maybe. Okay, let's move down to Mr. Townsend, Don Townsend. He would go over our monthly financial reports, please.
All right, as of May 31st, we had a balance in the general fund of $1,80981. On the general fund certificate of deposits, we have $1,300, I'm sorry, $1,300,000, yeah. So, that's a total of $3,1891 available to the general fund. Federal Asset Fund, US Treasury had a balance of zero. Share Special Fund at balance of $8,938. Drug Abuse Education Fund, $24,590. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, $27,857. Victim Assistance Fund, $482. Jail Fund, $12,013. Federal Asset Fund, Department of Justice, zero. American Rescue Plan has a balance of $1,386,719. Accommodations, the hotel motel tax has a balance of $312,900. Employees' Flexible Spending Account, $20,411. And Payroll Account, $112,600. In the old SPOS, the 2015 SPOS, we had a balance of $231,690. And by the way, that's where the stuff from Shawn Anderson for the, will be coming out of Mountain Rescue. And also, the new SPOS, 2021 SPOS, Projects account had a balance of $4,094. And the special local option sales tax proceeds account had a balance of $719,89. And the next page, you can see the income statement. As of April 30th, we had a balance of, actually, we brought in $610,152. We had budgeted $558,256. So, we were in excess funds of $52,596. Year to date, we have revenues collected were $11,688,809. Budgeted $10,913,123. And that's a excess of $775,686. Revenue, the expenses for April 30th, 2022, for the month of April, we had $942,529. We had budgeted $972,91. So, we were under budget by $29,562. And for the year to date, we had spent, expensed $10,4882 and budgeted $10,604,796. So, again, under budget, $203,914. Budget attained so far should be at 83.33%. We were, revenues attained at 88.93% and expenses attained at 79.13%. Local option sales tax did come in for the month at $238,651.70. And for special purpose local option sales tax, the, we brought in $298,314.10. And that is down from the record, almost record high of $305,000 from the prior month. We, just compared to purposes, we did go back last month, and we said, we have to go back to July 2007. And I believe that month, it was $313,693. But we believe in that number, there's probably some, it's called prorata, which is money that sometimes the state collects, and they don't have a really clean place to put it. So, they divide it up and give it to counties. It just happens sometimes in the state. And so, we think that's what happened in that back in July. Because if you look back, it was 180, then 243, then 227. And then from then on, it really went down. So, really, the last two months have been record-setting territory, which is excellent for Dade County. The next report is the 2021 SPOS tracking worksheet. And you, you see there that the amounts that have been expensed, $1 million. Year to date, 2022 disbursements is $1,283,100, I'm sorry, $513. And then the 2015 sheet, you see a total expenditure at the bottom right of $11,747,490. And then on the back, the last page, we have the year-to-date tax collection for fiscal year 2022 from our Dade County Tax Commissioner's Office. This runs from July 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022. And we've collected $4,846,188 from a budget of $5,197,500. So, she's right at 93.24% collected. That concludes the report.
Any questions? No. Any comments, questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve our panelists' report presented by Mr. Townsend. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a second.
A second.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote. Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Chair of the chair, yes, pass. Okay. Rob, you got any thing for us?
I don't.
Okay. The reading of the minutes, the reading of the minutes of our last monthly regular meeting, any special call meetings will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. The minutes are public record and available for view in the county commission office. The minutes are also included in our consent agenda. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Don Townsend to read our consent agenda. And after that, we'll entertain a motion pertaining to that. Mr. Townsend?
The approval of the agenda is amended by item number 13, which is the Back Valley Property Boundary Line Agreement. The approval of the previous meeting minutes, the review of the personnel status report, Resolution R-35-22, which is the reappointment of a member to the Public Library Board of Trustees, which is Mr. Tad Everett for a three-year term commencing July 1st, 2022, and expiring June 30th, 2025. This lost request for the library is see if the shop, first check to see if the shop at Dade County High School can create a similar display. If not authorized, up to $3,274.49. Am I correct? Okay. Purchased vehicle for the Board of Assessors field team inspections, a 2021 Ford F-150 truck at $29,895.80. Security system with a Vigilon camera server for the senior center, which is an Intel Wolf Pass rack mount server. And this also serves to the camera system at the parks. The award to the lowest bid, which was Lightfoot Technology for $8,491.25. The Dade County Mountain Rescue for various equipment purchases, as requested by Mr. Shawn Anderson, $27,675.25 for Information only, which was the courthouse project restoration project by Mr. Jenny Blevins, which is an insert in your packet. The proposed intergovernmental agreement for the distribution of proceeds generated by the 2023 Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Referendum, Resolution R-36-22, Dade County Joint Comprehensive Plan for 2022 through 2027, Resolution R-37-22, authorized District Attorney of Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit to contract with State of Georgia, allowing SPCR employee benefits. And Resolution R-38-22, appointment of County Safety Coordinator, which is Mrs. Patty Murphy. And also, the Back Valley Property Boundary Line Agreement as proposed by the county attorney.
Any questions?
None.
Any corrections?
Okay. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve as presented our consent agenda. Do they have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do they have a second?
Second.
Okay, let me call the vote. Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Chair of the chair, yes, and Mr. Lowry is the minister. All right, we need to go into just a short executive session pertaining to real estate. We won't be long. If y'all want to wait, that's fine. I need a motion to go on executive session.
Motion to enter.
All right, have a second.
Second.
Call the vote. Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?